El siguiente orador va a ser el reverendo Efrahine Zavala, seguido por Jessica Rodriguez y Reverendo Beth Rambicur. Gracias por estar aquí, reverendo. Por favor, dale su nombre para tener en cuenta. Tienen tres minutos para abordar el asunto.
Absolutamente. Mi nombre es Efrahine Zavala y soy el pastor asociado de la iglesia St. Paul's United Methodist Church. He tenido la oportunidad de voluntariar y servir en el proyecto del In, del que Gretchen ha hablado y otros han hablado. Y quiero decir lo bueno que ha sido ser en un lugar donde la gente entra y se trata como personas y se trata con amor, compasión y cuidado. Creo que es definitivamente importante, ya que se toman decisiones como estas, que atraiga a las comunidades de fe. Las comunidades de fe han estado allí desde el principio. Las comunidades de fe han estado allí cuidando a los refugiados y solicitantes de asilo. Así que tomar decisiones sin que ellos sean parte de la conversación de una manera significativa es incorrecto. Así que también deben ser parte de la conversación. Entiendo los puntos que se han hecho sobre transformar un lugar. Bueno, algunos lugares están destinados a ser transformados, otros lugares están destinados a ser eliminados. Este lugar es una cárcel para niños. Necesitamos darle la ayuda y el apoyo a nuestras comunidades de fe para que continúen haciendo un trabajo amoroso y compasivo que se preocupe por el desarrollo espiritual, el bienestar de estas personas que están aquí, no porque quieran estar aquí sino porque han sido, por muchas razones múltiples que conocemos, llevadas a este lugar. Necesitan un lugar donde puedan mostrar compasión y amor. Y la cárcel para niños no es definitivamente el lugar para hacer eso. Así que la narrativa que sigo escuchando, parece que es o este lugar o ningún lugar. Esa no es la experiencia que he tenido, habiendo voluntariado en este lugar. Hay ya tantos lugares haciendo esto, amigos. Hay tantos lugares haciendo esto, ¿por qué no ayudarlos? ¿Por qué no continuar proporcionando apoyo para ellos? ¿Por qué no continuar creando conciencia a la comunidad de que estos lugares están allí para hacer este trabajo? Y si algo quiere hacer en cuanto a este lugar en particular, permitamos continuar, permitamos retrasar la conversación y permitamos que las comunidades de fe participen. Darles el lugar que merecen porque han sido parte de esta solución desde el principio. No hacerlo sería simplemente incorrecto. Así que quiero invitarlos a que, por favor, yo opongo este plan de mover el albergue a esta cárcel y quiero que busquemos definitivamente formas más compasivas y amorosas donde diferentes voces de nuestras comunidades estén involucradas también. Muchas gracias.
El siguiente orador es Jessica Rodriguez. Jessica, gracias por estar aquí. Tienen tres minutos para abordar el asunto después de darles su nombre para tener en cuenta.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Jessica Rodriguez y soy organizadora con el Centro de Trabajadores Surios y vemos a los migrantes de primera mano, ¿verdad? Sabemos que este es el único centro de libertad diario en Arizona y en la frontera sur, y este es el primer de nuestros migrantes que vienen de nuestras fronteras. Así que ya hemos oído los nightmares que suceden dentro de esas celdas porque tienen niños enteros y llevan a cabo el trauma que ha sido infligido en los niños. Pero luego también pensando en el lugar, sabemos que no vamos a estar seguros y no nos sentimos seguros cuando tenemos patrón de vigilancia en las calles. Nuestra forma general es el bulevar del patrón de vigilancia. Así que incluso si estas familias están teniendo la opción de salir de la instalación que se propone, todavía estarán a disposición del patrón de vigilancia en esa calle. Así que no es seguro, no es seguro. Incluso personas de color y con el privilegio de estar en el estado, no entrarían a través de esta instalación para voluntariar porque no estarían seguros. Además de eso, no hay infraestructura verde y decir que el circuito es una infraestructura verde para las familias es completamente una mentira porque eso es solo para los bikers y para las personas que caminan por la calle, arriba y abajo. Estamos seguros cuando vemos casas alrededor, familias caminando, la gente caminando sus perros y nosotros niños jugando en las calles. Eso no va a pasar en ese lugar. Hay una falsa narrativa y los números van a caer de las familias que van a ser liberadas del custodio del patrón de vigilancia. Esta administración está avanzando cada vez más rápido para rechazar a la gente en la frontera, así que esos números van a caer. ¿Cuándo vamos a decir en el condado de Pima que no vamos a estar ganando de familias migrantes o encontrando momentos oportunistas para hacer un nombre? Vamos a tener que dejarlo a partir del negocio del condado. El condado nunca ha estado involucrado y no debería estar ahora mismo. No hemos visto la fuerza de ustedes todos para realmente luchar contra esta administración y enviar un mensaje claro de cómo vas a proteger a las familias migrantes. Y no creo que lo hagan ahora mismo cuando están tomando su dinero sucio. Los coloniales están haciendo esto y han estado haciendo esto durante mucho tiempo. Casa Alitas, voy a ir a la fiesta y veré esto como parte de la meta para crear un monopolio para las familias migrantes. Eso es lo que está sucediendo aquí. Quieren crear un monopolio y una falsa narrativa de que ustedes son los únicos que sirven a las familias migrantes cuando eso es una mentira. Y luego tenemos una línea borra entre el condado y la DHS. No están definiendo lo que significa tomar dinero.
Jessica, dale su tiempo.
Sí, última línea. No estamos viendo desde este condado y estamos creando una línea borra entre el condado y la DHS. No tenemos nada en papel con estos contratos sobre lo que significa usar fondos de la DHS. Y eso va hasta Stone Garden porque cuando revisamos Stone Garden, ustedes todos sabían que no podían hacer mucho y lo tomaron de nuevo. Así que ahora si tomas este dinero, ¿qué significa? Que esto...
Jessica, termina.
Gracias.
Reverendo Beth Rambicur, seguido por Amy Johnson y Marla Pacheco. Gracias por estar aquí hoy. Tienen tres minutos para abordar el asunto después de darles su nombre.
Buenas tardes. Es un placer estar aquí esta mañana. Mi nombre es Beth Rambicur y sirvo como directora de la ministría de conexión de la Iglesia Unida Methodist y les abordo su nombre esta mañana a cargo de nuestro bisabuelo, Robert T. Hoshabata, y de los 30,000 miembros de la Iglesia Unida Methodist que están invertidos en las ministrías para beneficiar a los solicitantes de asilo aquí en el condado de Pima. Hablo en particular a cargo del In y del In to America. Es extraño estar aquí ante ustedes en una habitación dividida sabiendo que la mitad de estas personas que he oído hablar eran las que contacté en colaboración cuando comenzamos el proyecto del In. Es extraño estar dividida como gente de fe alrededor de algo como la hospitalidad, alrededor de preguntas de ofrecer dignidad y compasión a nuestros hermanos y hermanas que han viajado tanto. Y aún así aquí estamos divididos. Tenemos una disagreemento sobre cómo mejor avanzar, pero no creo que ninguno de nosotros esté de acuerdo en que la mejor cosa que podemos hacer es ofrecer lugares de compasión y hospitalidad que se basen en nuestras comunidades, organizaciones de base que permitan que nuestros votantes y miembros constituyentes participen de maneras prácticas en los esfuerzos de alivio con los solicitantes de asilo. Ofrezco este mensaje de nuestro bisabuelo, Hoshabata. Me gustaría expresar mi profunda desaprobado en el plan de devolver el proceso de cuidado para aquellos que buscan asilo a una instalación cuyo objetivo es principalmente encarcelar en lugar de proporcionar humanidad y hospitalidad. Aquellos que legítimamente buscan seguridad y asilo de la injusticia y la violencia no deberían ser tratados como criminales. La iglesia ha respondido a la solicitud de la bienvenida y la asistencia segura a proyectos como el In y el In to America y continuamos pidiendo al Consejo Supervisor del condado de Pima que permita que las redes de base de fe proporcionen las mejores soluciones a estas crisis que enfrentamos. Pidiemos que el cuidado compasivo continúe siendo apoyado por el trabajo de nuestra justicia social ofrecida por iglesias, synagogues, templos y otras organizaciones de base de fe y secular. Finalmente, me gustaría darles un número. 426, 100. 426 invitados a una base diaria están alojados por nuestras comunidades de fe apoyados por 12 millones de personas en todo el mundo que creen en los esfuerzos de esta comunidad para responder de manera local a esta crisis. Le pedo que vote NO. Gracias.
El siguiente orador va a ser Amy Johnson. Gracias por estar aquí. Tienen tres minutos para abordar el asunto después de darles su nombre.
Gracias. Mi nombre es Amy Johnson. Soy residente de Tucson, residente del condado de Pima y residente de Arizona y como tal, como todos los demás aquí, soy contribuyente. No quiero hablar sobre lo que he oído porque he oído y aprendido mucho. Realmente aprecio el panel y aprecio a todos los que han hablado. Lo que quiero abordar es una falla económica. La falla económica, que la inmigración nos cuesta dinero. En este país tenemos una población envejecida y un ritmo de nacimiento flat. Sin nuevas personas entrando, especialmente familias jóvenes que han vivido en un lugar donde han tenido que trabajar muy, muy duro solo para tratar y sobrevivir en absoluto y saber cómo trabajar y ciertamente tener determinación para triunfar. Esto es lo que va a causar que la seguridad social se desbaste. Otra cosa que quiero abordar es el valor transaccional del dinero. Debido a que gastamos cierta cantidad, hay una relación indirecta, casi indirecta, entre dinero y riqueza. Si voy a ustedes y les pago un dólar por una manzana, sé que tengo una manzana, mi riqueza ha aumentado. Ustedes toman ese dólar y lo llevan a una tienda y compran algo. Su riqueza ha aumentado. Si la persona que está empleada en la tienda toma ese dólar y lo paga a su bebesita, su riqueza ha aumentado. Ese uno dólar en un día se multiplica cuatro veces. Así que decir, "No tomen esta cantidad de dinero", no tenemos ese tipo de relación. Otra cosa que quiero abordar es la gente que se preocupa por que sus impuestos suban. Yo solía tener un trabajo de seis cifras. Yo tenía una casa de dos pisos en Sarrita. Por motivos médicos, perdí todo. Y estoy aquí para decir que es la mejor cosa que jamás me ha pasado porque hasta entonces no sabía mi familia, mis amigos, en todo el país, el tipo de apoyo que me darían y cuánto se preocupaba por mí. No sepan qué temor a darle a su casa que poseen porque pueden tener que ir a un lugar más pequeño. Es una cosa liberadora. Gracias.
El siguiente orador va a ser Marla Pacheco, seguido por Reverendo Paul Cho y Sebastián Ginac.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marla Pacheco. Soy organizadora de la comunidad con la Coalición de Derechos Humanos. Todos hemos visto en las noticias, todos hemos leído en los periódicos las horribles cosas que suceden en estos centros de detención. Escuchamos con los niños, las familias que afirman, que hablan de todas las cosas inhumanas que suceden en estos lugares. Escuchamos sobre la perrera, el jardín, donde los niños y las familias están guardados, reuniéndose como animales. Escuchamos sobre la yelera, el cajón de hielo, donde los niños y las familias están guardados allí, tan fríos. ¿Cuántos niños han muerto en estos centros de detención? ¿Cuántos más niños van a morir debido a estos centros de detención? ¿Estamos siguientes? Usando este centro juvenil como cárcel de niños, ¿quién será el primer niño que muera allí? ¿Y quién será responsable de eso? ¿Cuál es la responsabilidad que va a tener? ¿Vale la pena ser CCS? ¿Va a ser el Consejo Supervisor del Patrón? ¿Va a ser la comunidad que piensa que esta es una buena idea? Este centro juvenil no es apropiado para nadie, para nadie en absoluto. Y necesita estar cerrado. Desafortunadamente, aquí en Tucson, hay muchas, muchas escuelas que no están cerradas. 使用一个学校 la comunidad, estamos detrás de nuestros familiares porque estas no son solo refugiados, estas no son solo migrantes, son familiares. Y la comunidad estará aquí para apoyar, para proporcionar. Eso es lo que debe hacerse. No necesitamos poner a estos niños y las familias en una cárcel después de que ya hayan sido traumatizados por personas en uniformes, por cámaras constantemente observadas. Como comunidad, queremos estar allí, queremos ayudar. Así que, ¿dónde están las opciones? ¿Dónde están las opciones para nosotros como comunidad para poder ayudar? Hemos estado haciendo esto durante mucho tiempo. Y como se ha dicho antes, Casa Alitas no es la primera albergue que ha estado haciendo este trabajo. Hay muchas otras organizaciones y iglesias que han estado haciendo este trabajo y seguirán haciendo este trabajo. Así que no sé si este reunión es solo una muestra porque la decisión se ha tomado, los bloques ya están siendo removidos, las cámaras ya están siendo removidas. No importa cuántos murals, cuán bonitos hagan esto, no va a cambiar eso. Y si creen que esto va a ser como una habitación, entonces envíen a su niño allí.
Ustedes, dale su tiempo.
Gracias.
El siguiente orador va a ser Paul Cho. Reverendo Cho, gracias por estar aquí. Por favor, dale su nombre para tener en cuenta. Y tienen tres minutos para abordar el asunto del Consejo Supervisor.
Honores miembros del asunto, soy el reverendo Paul Cho. Soy residente de Tucson, Distrito 2, Ward 3 de nuestro condado y soy parte de la respuesta unida a las necesidades migrantes de estos. Y como parte de esta respuesta, entiendo muy bien los desafíos que tenemos para proporcionar instalaciones, facultades en la variedad de problemas en manos. Es una cabeza. Y aún así creo que tomar decisiones a causa de la conveniencia es a menudo no lo mejor a largo plazo. Y es especialmente cierto cuando la conveniencia toma precedence simplemente porque nos sentimos arrastrados para tomar una decisión. Es mi comprensión de que la limitación del tiempo en particular, la limitación que tiene nuestro servicio de comunidad católica en su instalación actual ha impulsado este plan actual hacia su lugar. Pero quiero afirmarles que también queremos responder a esta necesidad como comunidad. Hay otros planes que tengo en mis manos. Del Network de cuidado de fronteras de Arizona Sur, el presidente, el reverendo Dr. Dottie Escobedo-Frank tiene otros planes donde las comunidades de fe locales pueden ayudar, asistir para que podamos tener más tiempo en la creación de una instalación que realmente cumpla con las necesidades que están en juego. No estamos tratando de reemplazar a Casa Alitas. Estamos tan gratos de su trabajo. Queremos trabajar juntos. Permítanos trabajar juntos. Cuando me naturalizé hace 11 años, parte de mi entrevista de naturalización fue sobre, la pregunta fue sobre mi responsabilidad como ciudadano de Estados Unidos. Y la respuesta correcta fue ser leal a este país incluso en lugar del país de mi nacimiento. Y que ser leal a este país fue descrito como servir a la nación para hacer trabajo importante para la nación cuando lo necesite. Bueno, es abundantemente claro que nuestra nación necesita de ciudadanos para hacer el trabajo duro de hacer que esta nación sea grande. Y ha sido la gran y poderosa retórica de esta pronta nación esperar a que sus ciudadanos suban a esa tarea y ofrezcan esos servicios. Este fin de semana celebramos el 50º aniversario del aterrizaje de la luna. En las palabras del presidente Kennedy, "No pregunte lo que su país puede hacer por usted. Pregunte lo que puede hacer por su país". Bueno, estamos aquí pidiendo que nos permitan servir, asistir para que podamos tener más tiempo, que podamos ejercer otros planes, que podamos encontrar una escuela o otra instalación que sea mejor adaptada para cuidar a nuestros migrantes que el actual centro de detención. Les pido que reconsideren su plan y consideren otros. Gracias.
Sebastián, gracias por estar aquí. Por favor, tienen tres minutos para abordar el asunto. Dile su nombre para tener en cuenta.
Muchas gracias. Mi nombre es Sebastián Ginac. Trabajo para el consulado de Guatemalán aquí en Tucson. Realmente me siento mal, triste o medio mezclado. Y con respeto a usted, quiero caminar por ahí, es mi estilo cuando hablo. Soy el primer Mayan Cacchiquel que llegué a California. En Mayan, California. Allí, me presenté para asilo político y no me dieron mi asilo político. Y ahora trabajando con los migrantes, he estado en Nueva York, California, Arizona, ayudando a los migrantes con o sin documento. Ahora me siento triste cuando escucho argumentos como mezclados con la ira o odio. Eso me hace triste.
Por favor, necesita abordar el Consejo Supervisor.
Sí. Disculpe. Católico o no católico, es un tipo de lucha. Lo que me hace triste también es que muchas personas que se han acusado mutuamente nunca han estado en Alitas. Mi trabajo en Alitas es como un orientador legal. Tres cosas que hago todos los días que estoy aquí. Estoy allí, disculpe. Estoy allí, lunes, viernes, viernes y domingo, hago mis horas de voluntariado. Tres cosas. Allí, la gente viene a mí porque confían en que soy mayan cacchiquel. Hablo español, hablo cacchiquel y trato de hacer mi inglés. Y tres cosas que quiero compartirles. Una mujer de 20 años, joven, ocho meses embarazada y me llegó llorando y dijo: "Quiero saber dónde está mi esposo. Fuimos separados en la frontera". Eso es uno. Y el otro es: "Quiero saber dónde está mi abuela". Ella tiene 85 años, fue separada de nosotros. "Quiero saber dónde está..." Y el otro es: "Quiero saber dónde está mi hijo de tres años, fue separado de nosotros". Así que este es mi trabajo. Ahora, si tenemos diferentes iglesias, sitios, diez sitios, no puedo hacer mi trabajo con esto.
Por favor, diga en el micrófono. Sebastián, tengo gente en la teléfono, por favor.
Bien, porque no tengo tiempo para hablar en cacchiquel, mam, quiche, español en diferentes iglesias. Por eso les pido al menos por ahora que piensen en un espacio grande donde pueda dar mi servicio a mi propio pueblo, salvadoreños, nicaraguanos, sundores, todo. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Y estas son palabras de mi pueblo de Guatemala. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Hasta una hora y media, el último orador va a ser Isabel García. Isabel, por favor, venga a la puerta. Gracias por estar aquí, Isabel. Appreciate your patience. Tienen tres minutos y por favor dale su nombre para tener en cuenta.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Isabel García y soy de una familia que tiene seis generaciones desde aquí. Estoy aquí para pedirles que voten NO en este asunto realmente difícil aquí esta mañana, como hemos oído a todos. Pero he sido abogado de defensa criminal durante la mayor parte de mi carrera. Comandé el oficio de defensor legal. He ido a las cárceles en todo el país, en realidad. Estaba en comisiones sobre el crimen y la reforma. Y he sido abogado caminando. Y hablar de ello me hace nervioso, me da sudor. El pensamiento de entrar a una cárcel, incluso si la has dotado, es realmente, realmente molesto y realmente decepcionante. Sé que todos tienen realmente buenas intenciones. Sé que esta comunidad es una gran comunidad. He estado trabajando en este asunto de inmigración durante más de 40 años. Sabemos lo que es y vemos la transformación que está pasando. Pero no podemos permitir que el sistema carcelario ahora sea los beneficiarios. Y eso es lo que estamos viendo. Sí, estamos a cargo de cerrar una cárcel que nunca deberíamos haber construido para empezar, para bloquear a los niños. Y así, ya saben, hemos cerrado una parte de ello. Como la gente ha dicho, necesitamos continuar y no solo nos agradecemos por lo que hemos hecho, sino que realmente debemos preguntarnos nosotros mismos. ¿Qué estamos haciendo y por qué todas las industrias carcelarias y militaristas de repente están interesadas en ayudarnos? Solo pregunte a algunas de las organizaciones que están investigando las cárceles. Saben, odiamos las cárceles, odiamos las cárceles, queremos tratamiento o al menos así lo dicen. Así que la industria de las cárceles viene a ustedes todos y dice: "Oh, somos los proveedores de tratamiento". No podemos alimentar este sistema carcelario. Tenemos que decir NO a la DHS y su concepto de gobierno entero, incluso en cuanto a la entrega de ayuda humanitaria. Ahora, leí ese contrato como parte de Klepsy. No veo ningún lugar, y usted adoptó, no veo ningún lugar donde esa ayuda humanitaria sea permitida. Nuestro sheriff estaba en DC por una semana tratando de pedir eso para que pudiera venir y pasarlo, para que ustedes pudieran pasar eso. Y de hecho, no pudo obtenerlo. Parte del contrato dice que hay cuatro o cinco deberes. ¿Dónde ves que eso va a caber allí? Creo que estás mintiendo en nosotros o alguien lo es. Y no queremos el dinero carcelario para cuidar a nuestros hijos. Nuestra comunidad es hermosa. Todos necesitamos venir juntos y tener alternativas para revender esta parte de la cárcel. Por favor, voten NO.
Bien, ese concluye la llamada al público. Vamos a tomar una pausa. Estaremos de vuelta alrededor de 11:00.
I'd like to call back to order the special meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors for Monday, July 22, 2019. I'd like to thank everybody who spoke to this issue. Your comments were powerful and thoughtful and loving. A little bit of anger thrown in there, too, and I don't blame anybody for that. I understand it all. I think that's part of intelligent community conversation, and so I'm pleased. I thank everybody for being respectful and nice and listening to each other during a very difficult set of comments. We probably ought to start with a staff report on what we have going on here. Mr. Huckleberry, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, wait. Do we have our folks on telephonic communication there still?
Yes, I'm here. Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Supervisor Miller. Supervisor Bronson? Well, let's see if we can get her back on the phone here. Mr. Huckleberry.
Yes, I am here.
Oh, good. Thank you.
I'm having difficulty hearing you. You keep fading in and out.
Okay, I keep trying to talk loud, but we'll keep working on that.
No, no, it's not you. It's not you. It's the system. You keep fading in and out.
Very good. Thank you, Supervisor Bronson. Mr. Huckleberry, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is what you have is a cooperative agreement for the Division of Humanitarian Services. When we first received the letter from the bishop, we knew that there needed to be a replacement facility for the central location at the monastery, and it needed to probably occur fairly quickly. The cooperative agreement you have, we first discussed it with, obviously, the county attorney. It started out as a lease, and frankly, because of the systems and where it is located in units 700, 800, 900 of the juvenile justice complex, it's really more of an operating agreement to where we're allowing Catholic Community Services to use this facility for their humanitarian aid purposes. And the county would continue to operate the building from the perspective of the utilities, the maintenance, as well as the janitorial services, and at the option of Catholic Community Services, both food services and laundry services. We've indicated that it can be made available fairly quickly. It is a facility that has been out of service for some time and simply requires us to go and look at making sure all the utility systems are in order and working condition. In addition to that, we know that there are certain minor modifications that need to be made to the facility to facilitate the services that are being provided by Catholic Community Services, such as the entry points, all the medical provisions of services and others. And so those are all minor, very minor modifications that can be made if this agreement is approved. The agreement has, again, a termination in it that basically says it can basically be terminated by either party for no cause, and it has a 30-day notice in it. And what we've indicated is that it can, in fact, be made available until it's no longer needed. And if it's no longer needed, it can be closed. And so I think that is an important point. In addition to that, we know that there are certain operating costs in reactivating the facility. Again, the air conditioning and the heating and the cooling and the utilities. We've estimated what those are and provided them in the aggregate with other costs associated with food and laundry, maintenance and janitorial. We have made a request of the federal government to provide humanitarian aid grant to the county in the amount of $530,000, which should cover all of the costs associated with operation until the 31st of December. And that cost is variable, given probably the largest cost variable is food. And if Catholic Community Services wants to provide one or two meals and then one main meal through the juvenile kitchen, those costs can probably drop fairly dramatically. We, I think, are in the position that it can be activated fairly quickly if the board approves the cooperative agreement. We know that most, all federal grants are reimbursement, and they generally reimburse for costs based on documentation. So a cost reimbursement contract is nothing new for us in the grant area. We know that we've made three separate applications, two for $530,000 for two different sources of funds from the Department of Homeland Security. We have also made application based on House Resolution 3401, which is the federal government humanitarian aid package that passed through Congress. That application is for approximately one and a half million dollars. That would cover more than likely a year's worth of activity. So we're fairly confident that one or more of those grants will be approved, offsetting any cost associated with providing the services and the facilities to Catholic Community Services during the period. With that, I think we can answer questions. I provided the board with, obviously, the cooperative agreement, our transmittal memorandum, as well as last Friday, we summarized a series of issues and sent that to the board as well. And I believe that Supervisor Miller had asked some questions through a newsletter, and I provided answers to her and copied the balance of the board on those. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Very good. Questions from board members? Anybody on the phone want to go first, maybe? So we can kind of work on that communication, because I know it's difficult at best. That's someone hanging up, probably. No, I'm just kidding.
Supervisor Cheryl Leas.
Supervisor Miller, please.
You know, as I listened to the various individuals speak this morning, I did have a list of questions. Mr. Huckleberry did provide a lot of the answers. There still are some open ones, specifically on the parking lot that is being done. He said we were going to do it for, I believe it is, legal services moving into the building in a year. I still believe that is a true cost associated with this. And then the kitchen facilities that will be used. This contract is for five years, right? One year plus four, one-year renewals. And so the wear and tear on that, I believe, is a real cost to taxpayers. I also believe the fair market value of the facility needs to be reimbursed. And then it gets down to the hospitals. You talked about the medical expenses being $35,000 per year, and then you said if hospitals, if people need to be hospitalized, et cetera, that's going to get into some real money. And there was a question as to who's going to be paying for that. And security is another issue. I believe, based on all the comments I heard here this morning, people want these individuals to be kept safe, and I think there will be security costs associated with this. And now that we're not leasing out this facility to Catholic Community Services and not being indemnified, the liability is on the taxpayers. And we have seen individuals that have passed away in these facilities, and that's a real concern. The Stone Garden funding, when that was approved, finally approved, it was identified that $200,000 would be going to humanitarian aid. And now we've come back and just put another condition that, oh, by the way, the indirect funding that we were planning to recover, we now want that to be humanitarian aid. I think without that going back before the board, and also, you know, what kind of impact is this going to have on the Stone Garden grant if we keep changing our mind where we want these monies to go? That $335,000 was identified as a huge issue by several of the supervisors, that we were not recovering our true costs for administering this grant. And now we're coming back saying, well, we'll just move that money over to humanitarian aid. What happened to the argument that we needed to recover our true costs? Then the concerns, I have concerns about the juveniles, that we are housing down there. Here are the numbers, anywhere from 30 to 60 individuals. What kind of impact is it going to have on them? The courts, is there, and I know that in the documentation, they were talking about scheduling monthly meetings, but I still am very concerned about that. The city of Tucson is, there's going to be a vote on whether or not they become a sanctuary city. How is that going to impact the cost on this facility? What are the other jurisdictions in the area doing, the city of Tucson? Are they, you know, putting up funding? Are they providing anything for this effort? Any of the other cities and towns in Pima County? And as I listen to all of the people speak this morning, and by the way, thank you to all of those folks who identified themselves as volunteers working with the individuals coming into our community. But as I listen to everyone this morning, it may, you know, there were an individual identified that 426 asylum seekers are being dealt with daily by all of the faith-based community, and there's multiple groups involved. And I guess that brings up the question, why is this facility only being provided for use by Catholic Community Services versus letting everyone have volunteers in there providing services? So I heard a lot of discussion about that, and I also, and the fact that this has come forth as an emergency, when it appears that people have known for months that the Benedictine Monastery was going to be remodeled, and it appears that discussions have been going on for months, that this was identified as a potential facility for months. Why are we rushing into this to make this decision? And I think numerous folks got up and made the point that we don't have any funding from the federal government. And make no mistake, this is a direct result of the failure of our senators, our congressional representatives. They have all failed us. They have not had the political will to come up with a solution to fix this problem. And as long as we have this loophole, this is going to continue to be an issue for our community. And the question is, do we let these folks, just put them in the community and don't do anything for them, and let them just go? Or do we try to help them get placed in other areas and make sure that the community is safe? And public safety is the biggest issue for me, not only for the asylum seekers, but for our residents. And it comes down to any criminal activity or any health issues. And we know, one of the gentlemen said, the first time some of these people receive medical care is when they come into our country. So there could be a potential for huge issues there. But the biggest question I have right now, based on everything that I heard this morning, why is this an emergency hearing, and why can't we wait a few more weeks? And have we, Pima County, requested emergency funding from our federal government? I have. I contacted Senator Sinema, I contacted Senator McSally, and Representative Ann Kirkpatrick. I have contacted them and asked them, what are they going to do for us in this community because of their failure, the failure of the federal government to do their job? I have not yet heard from them, and to be fair, I just sent that out last week, and it was when I heard about this issue. And if these discussions have been going on for months, I question the need for an emergency decision right now, and I would like to see this continued personally. And wait until we do get the funding from the federal government. And they put forth emergency funding all the time, and there is no reason that Pima County cannot get this emergency funding. So those are my concerns and comments on this. I look forward to hearing what the other board members have to say.
Thank you, Supervisor Miller. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have four points that I'd like to elaborate upon about why I will not be able to support this agreement. Purely and simply, the first point is Pima County, and more importantly, Pima County taxpayers should not be in the migrant shelter business. If we were to ask taxpayers if they wanted their tax dollars spent to shelter, feed, give medical care, and other free services to asylum seekers as they transit through our community into our country's interior, I believe their answer would be a resounding no. Second point, faith-based and not-for-profits and non-governmental organizations should be taking the lead and shouldering the responsibility of addressing this humanitarian crisis. It should be a collaborative effort among all not-for-profits, regardless of their individual missions, and not the predominant task of just one social service agency, even though Catholic Community Services is doing a magnificent job of dealing with the situation. Therefore, I'm calling upon the not-for-profit and the NGO stakeholders to hold an emergency regional-wide summit. The best and the brightest members of our community serve on their boards and as their executives, and I see no reason why, with all hands on deck, together, they can't come up with a solution to this crisis that is not saddled on the backs of Pima County taxpayers. The not-for-profits and NGOs should be actively pursuing federal funding to address this, a federal issue. Asylum seeker processing is not the responsibility of Pima County government, nor should taxpayers be forced to foot the bill. Three, the manipulation of the Stone Garden Grant's conditions of acceptance are most concerning. The recapture of expenses associated with this grant's acceptance was a primary condition, and now magically, it has been added to the humanitarian relief condition of acceptance. Nearly half of the Stone Gardens rejected grant last year by this board would be spent on asylum seeker aid rather than on law enforcement. Humanitarian aid has never been approved from Stone Garden grant funds by the federal government. All county efforts and plans for hopes for reimbursement hold no guarantees at any level, and discussion of lawsuits against the federal government is just what this county needs, another lawsuit. Four, providing taxpayer property and service to asylum seeker leaves the issue of the county's potential exposure to legal claims resulting from possible illness, theft, injury, assault, or even death, and they have not been fully addressed. I am requesting that the Pima County Attorney provide this board with a legal opinion on this matter. It is a well-known fact that such litigation seeks out deep pockets, and in this instance, Pima County and its taxpayers have the deepest pockets. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I will not be able to support this lease.
Thank you. Supervisor, you want me to go? Okay. Um, we did a very poor job of rolling this out in the months that we had to talk about it. We did not include community in a good enough way, and I'm sorry for that. I apologize for that. That said, we're at a difficult moment now with a responsibility to deal with some of these costs and these folks in a good, decent, forthright, humane manner. I think Mr. Kelly's comments at the beginning of our call to the audience were apropos. We've got to think about the long term of this and what's that going to look like. And that doesn't make this option look that great. Perhaps the biggest problem that we're facing here today, and that's why good friends see themselves on the other side of this from each other, people who have supported each other and worked together on projects for years, because we live in a poisoned atmosphere right now, and it's an atmosphere that's been poisoned by others far outside our community. And yet we suffer from that terribly, terribly. And I regret that, and I'm very sorry for that. We can be nice, we can be mean about it, we can be whatever about it, you know? My sixth-grade teacher told me to go back to Mexico, too. I don't, I was born in the United States. I didn't know what she was talking about. Doesn't help to have those kind of comments floating around. It damages all of us, and it puts people who have been friends and working together, and even people with differences of opinion who have been working together for years at odds with each other. That's a poison that's really bad for all of us. I think the comments made by Isabel Garcia were good as well, in that we know people are good and that they want to make a hospitable place. There's no doubt about that. And if this is at all to work for any period of time, it's going to take our volunteers and their caring ways, and people with religious beliefs that call them to speak up, and people with social justice beliefs to step up and care with each other and work together with each other. I think, really, this could be a good bridge, but it's a bridge, and we need to think about it that way, and we need to have the folks from the faith-based communities get together and work on putting together a plan that will look better. Because it is not just that we need to do something, but it's also important about how we do it. I get that. I get that. So I think that's a lot of pressure to put on the volunteer community, the faith-based community, the social justice community, and everybody who's been working on this issue for years. Because some people have developed expertise in the specific area of dealing with asylum seekers, but other people have been working on this issue in terms of fairness and justice for immigrants in this country for 40 years and more. I respect all of that, and I regret terribly that we did not give voice to that community in an appropriate way. And I've tried to do that, even to the point of slowing things down so we could look at some other alternatives. I know the county has looked at probably 25, 30 different options over the last few months, and that's real. And so it's going to be difficult for us to find that next place that works. It's going to be very difficult to work together, because people aren't going to want to. But if we want to be good, if we want to be right, then we will step forward and we will do that together. And we will find a place, or maybe multiple places, that work for us together. Now, I know that the institutional folks, especially those who are in charge of law enforcement relating to immigration, ain't going to like that. They would far prefer to have a much more centralized kind of pit stop, because then they can wash their hands and go about their merry ways. And that ain't going to work either. So I'm calling on people to put their best foot forward and find an alternative for us here, together as community with strength, and listening to our voices and caring for our voices in a good, positive way, not in this poisoned atmosphere that we live in. We have to try really, really hard to divorce ourselves from that. And I've been called a lot of names this week and heard a lot of things come at me that I'd never expected to, and I'm fine with that. I've divorced myself from any hurt feelings or any anger about it, because I realize that that's coming from a place of goodness. It's not coming from a place of badness. I understand that. And I think it's incumbent on all of us to do that right now. Let go of that and recognize that there's all these forces out there that are creating horrible, horrible atmosphere that surrounds us, and it's very hard to do that. And this is the point that we're at in our country. So it's not just about Tucson. It's not just about a juvenile center. It's about all of that. And it's happened before. This isn't the first time. When my sixth-grade teacher told me to go back to Mexico, guess what? It was three days after Kent State. It was a poisoned atmosphere, too. And then it hurt. People were angry, and right after she did that, she hit one of the kids in class because she was so angry. She hit her. We'll never forget that. I'll never forget that. That doesn't leave me. It won't leave me. That's why I believe we have to give voice. That's why I think we have to divorce ourselves from anger. That's why I think we've got to find a way to do something better, to find a way to make something work. Instead of resting on our laurels, instead of wallowing in frustration and anger, got to step up. We've got to move on. We have to be the brave ones for the goodness of the borderlands, for the goodness of all those families and all those people that have lived here for centuries, for the goodness of the Tohanna-Adam people who have shared their lands with us, not always willingly, but we found a way to live together and love each other. And I love my brothers and sisters. I'm not ashamed of that. I'm proud of that. Supervisor.
Mr. Chairman. You know, thank you for your comments, particularly on the kind of environment that we live in today, because I think it is distressing that we live in an atmosphere today where people can't disagree. And if you take a look at the basis that this country was founded in, there were a lot of people that didn't necessarily agree. Jefferson and Adams couldn't agree on almost anything, and yet they found a way to work together, sit down, put emotions aside, and figure it out. Today, we live in a society where if someone disagrees, instead of asking the question, A, what does that person know that I should know? And B, how can we find a way to work together? No, you must be wrong. You disagree with me. We need to put that aside, because we live in one of the most incredible communities I have had the pleasure of serving for the last 23 years. When we saw what we did as a community in coming together when Katrina survivors were coming, when Gabby Giffords was shot, and we were all hurt, like we are on this issue. And Supervisor Leas is correct. This is not- And Supervisor Elias is correct, this is not something that we control, have very little control, as a matter of fact, over this. We are suffering the consequences of lack of decision elsewhere, but make no mistake, we are suffering. We feel our emotions, we feel hurt, we feel some level of disagreement. But I want you to look around. Look at your neighbor, look at the other side, look at the people that spoke on the other side of this issue. Folks, these are our brothers and sisters. These are the people that when we come together as one, we can do phenomenal things. And this, in fact, is an incredible community. When I've described Tucson and Pima County, it is a community of healing, it is a community of regeneration, it is an incredible community that is second to none, and that's because of all of you here, every single one of you, whether or not you agree or disagree with the final decision of this board, play a part in that. And it is because of that that we are who we are. You know, today, we have a very difficult decision in front of us, and we've read a lot about it, I even read Supervisor, Councilmember Kasachik's editorial yesterday. And you know what? Maybe Supervisor Elias is correct, and we should have done a better job at inclusion at the beginning of this process. But that's not something we can do anything about, because that's in the rearview mirror. And there's a reason the windshield is so much bigger than the rearview mirror, because the windshield, we can do something about. So what I'm going to suggest is whatever outcome of this meeting is, let's all come together. Today, we need to make sure we have options, but going forward, you heard Mr. Huckleberry say this, going forward, this doesn't have to be the option, but right now, we need this option. If we're going to be the community that we all have been, that we can be, it doesn't need to stay the only option, but today it is. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the item.
I have a motion and a second before us. I would comment, though, that, as we move forward and find a way to change this facility or what it's going to look like, or how we offer services, that we look for each other to help, and the county to help, too. I mean, I don't think we should have a committee or anything like that that's official. I don't think we belong in that conversation. I've heard that repeatedly from people today, that maybe government doesn't belong in this conversation. That's a lot of pressure to put on you guys. That's a lot of pressure to put on you guys, because we live with that pressure all the time. I do get paid for it, please don't yell out from your seat again, or I'll have you removed. I do, and I don't mind it, I don't dodge it. That's okay. I've been called worse, maybe even yesterday. It's okay. You know, it's a lot of pressure, so we're going to have to figure it out in an organized manner, and how that might look, because I think that's truly going to be the key to us keeping our cool and keeping our success together, and keeping ourselves headed in the right direction. Anybody else have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you're fading in and out, I've got a horrible connection.
Okay, well, I just finished my comments, and I think we're going to move to a roll call, Sharon.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Supervisor Bronson?
Hi.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Most carries three to two.
Again, I don't think this is a final thing, I think this is something that we still need to work on together, but I think it can be a bridge that helps us survive these next few months, and helps our friends survive the next few months. Please, please, keep this meeting in order, keep this meeting in order. Are some other folks that have signed up to speak? If anybody wants to speak, we can go through these. If not, then I'll go ahead, and hearing no objections, this meeting will stand adjourned.